Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is June 6, 2023. A thought for today. It's always, it always seemed impossible until it's done, Nessa Mandela. I'm gonna head and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask if, Commissioner Mason, if you would lead us in our invocation tonight, and Commissioner Cowan, if you would, lead us in our pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you this evening. We've come blessing you and thank you and honoring you for all that you've done and all that you're about to do. God, we ask that as we move forward into doing the business of Newton County, God, we ask that you go with us, be with us, give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding, God, to help change the trajectory of this community and take it to the next level. God, we thank you, we bless you. God, we just ask that you allow your presence and your Spirit to rest rule and abide in this boardroom, God. God, we ask that you do it in the mighty name of Jesus. Because you said it, we believe it, and that settles it. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you guys for that. We're gonna ask you, before we get going, if you will, please silence your phones tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, please. I seek a motion.
Please.
The motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan? The county attorney just asked me the same thing. We can't, oh, you go ahead, sir.
Yes, so if the board wishes to do that, that would be items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. These are all the contracts that sort of go along with the grants that you're approving in the consent agenda. So that would be items 10 through 16. If you would like to add them to the consent agenda, you would need a motion to do so.
You wanna make that into a motion? Is there a second? The motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I think it passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, can we get clarification on which items those were one more time? I'm sorry.
10 through...
10 through 16.
Like it's 10 through 16. All of them does, but all of them is stated.
They all have a match that's stated, and they're all included in the grant applications as well.
And they all budgeted for.
And they're all budgeted.
I seek a motion to approve the agenda with those changes, please. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we let citizen make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Rosie Crawford, citizen of Covington, Georgia.
Good evening, Archie Shepherd, District 4. We're here to discuss item number seven, the county manager's report. We want to discuss the Newton County Low-Income Senior Home Repair Program. And that is part of the county manager's report tonight. We have some senior citizens here, and they want to get out of here before the storm comes. So this is part of his report tonight. So we want to speak on that a few minutes.
Item number seven, sir, is that your report tonight? Is this your report tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My comment concerns the Senior Home Repair Funding Program and a reminder that the commissioners had agreed to hire people to assist the seniors that are not computer literate, but that's not what's happening. When the senior goes down to apply, the help that they were expecting didn't happen. They were told someone would be there to type in the information into the computer for them. Instead, they had to try to do it themselves using their phone with little instruction from people who said they were volunteers and not hired with pay. And the senior was told to meet with the, in other words, to go on the line and use their phone. And most seniors are not computer illiterate, they are not computer and phone savvy to be able to complete this process. And this only caused frustration. And another thing is not really getting the job done. This is wrong and unacceptable and needs to be corrected. Give the people what has been agreed upon before the deadline. And they need to know exactly what to bring. And I know some of them got that information once they was there, but if they had it beforehand, it would help them and save some time. And I think if they had to go online, that's another reason why they didn't have the info that they really needed. So that is my concern for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the chairman's report. I have the Miracle League with us tonight, Mr. Mass. If you would please come up, Mr. Hopkins. Mike, you guys, if y'all would come on up, please.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you giving us a few minutes tonight. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
We came to y'all a little over a year ago and announced that the Miracle League had been awarded the Miracle League All-Star Weekend. So we're within roughly a little over a year from being able to host that. And to give you just a quick reminder, they'll be coming in, we'll host about 120 athletes from all over the country, ranging, this past year in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, it ranged from age six to 78. So there's a wide range of ages. They'll come in Friday afternoon, get settled in the rooms. We'll have a meet and greet on Friday night. We haven't got all that location down yet. That'd be from 6 to 8. We'll have a little cookout. They get little booklets of all the players, and they love to go around and do autographs and things like that. Then we'll come back Saturday. We'll play ball all day Saturday, and Saturday night we'll do a banquet. And we did want to share a quick video. This was from Murfreesboro back in September, myself and Mike, and Mike's the chairman of our Miracle League Board, and at that time Olivia. We got to go up and spend the weekend with them and kind of shadow them and see how they done things and just watch. Here's a quick video, and then Mike's gonna share a little bit.
Amazing stuff. You know, the one thing video still can't do is, I'm sorry. Express the joy these kids have. As someone played ball growing up, it is amazing to watch these kids. They want to be just like every healthy child playing ball. And so it's a big undertaking that we've undertaken. And we got about 16 months, and we're gonna need a lot of volunteers and a lot of help and a lot of support. And we really believe it's gonna be a signature event for our community, and it will be a great way to showcase the positive things in our community. And so, you know, the city of Covington recently donated $25,000 to this event. And for Black better, I'd like to challenge the Board of Commissioners to match that with the city. We're going to Industries and some of our partners throughout the community to try to raise money. We're looking at a pretty significant budget for this because we're gonna have to house the children and their families, up to four people. It is a great way for them to get away for the weekend. And then on Sunday, we're gonna allow our kids that play in the league every season to have a day just like the kids did on Saturday. So it's gonna be a real good event. So the first weekend in October, so about 16 months away. And, you know, we just want y'all to be our ambassadors. We want to tell the community, get the word out, and raise some funds, and really have a great time here in Newton County with the Miracle League All-Stars. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll open it up. If anyone wants to make comments. Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What a, you know, what a powerful video. I would like to thank, we would rise to the challenge of the city and try to match that. We'll have to get together behind some, we'll get together with our finance people, not behind closed doors, but we'll get together with our finance people and try to see what we can do. So I have a, you know, that place was near and dear, you know, to my dad, so.
Absolutely.
You know, that kind of makes it near and dear to me, too. So, and to see those kids be able to participate like so many other kids is a wonderful thing. So I hope we can help out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo Commissioner Edwards. It just hit me as a reminder when he said that the Miracle League and the location was near and dear to his dad's heart. I remember just a couple of years ago, we went out and dedicated one of the pavilions to his dad. And so I think it's an amazing, amazing program, very, very powerful video, and I too hope that this board would definitely rise to that challenge to be able to help support the amazing benefits that this has on those children's lives. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look here, I too have been and still is a part of the Miracle League for several years. And like most of us on the board, when it came to the Miracle League, I always raised my hand up because I wanted to do something good for them. I think back to them being that long ago, that we gave, I think, $200,000 to the mental health facility, is in District 4 now. We gave $200,000 to them, and that was when we all commissioned, was given $1 million. And also I had wrote, I had talked to Ms. Kennedy, and I think at a meeting we had here, and she had said that there was good money to donate it to, but somehow or another, and I guess it's on the date when we changed it, I kind of slipped on it because I didn't know when we had changed it. But the challenge that I have to this board this evening is give me back my $100,000 that I wanted to give back to the Miracle League. Go back into the Arthur Fund and give me the $100,000 so we can give to our Miracle League for our county, for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Sanders?
My colleagues kind of said it all, and I was gonna sit back here because this kind of made me emotional. I have a heart for the youth, everybody knows that. I'm up here talking about the youth all the time. So I'm on board with whatever we do to make sure that our youth have an experience, no matter what disability. I don't look at disabilities, I just look at them as children. So whatever we can do to assist, I'm on board.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you. I'm supporting Stan and his recommendation to put together some, do some matching with the city.
Commissioner Henderson?
This is my last comment. And I just want people to know that when we said, I had made out a list, and I give dollars to the churches that I want to give to Miracle League, Nelson High, our school to them, and educational programs, because I knew that children in Newton County would be high in math, and they still are, and math and try to help improve their schools. But I also knew that the Miracle League, that this was coming, because I know Dwayne had told us over and over again that eventually we were gonna have to spend some money on them. And so we want to do something good while we have. I think some of our members and maybe myself have been quoted saying, this summer Monday, once in a lifetime experience of Arthur funding. And so what I fail to understand is that if you spending money on good stuff, on good things, then why take it away? I could see if we were taking it and doing something wrong with it, but what better way to give what the commissioners want to give? And if I'm not, and correct me if I'm wrong, when it came to Stan, his Wi-Fi in his district, he got a million dollars. And I think Ronnie got a million dollars for somebody else in our district. And why can't I give him at least $100,000 to the Miracle League?
Thank you, sir. I thank all of y'all. Thank all of you. Having a son who's 21 years old at the house, Ryan, who was special needs, you know, knowing that the enjoyment that they get the most is being outside, whether it's outside, running around, playing, or just being outside, enjoying the outside. I'm hoping that we can, I'm hoping that the direction that we're asking tonight is to ask our county manager to find these dollars to, whether it's to match or whatever, and come back with a recommendation before the board. I'm hoping that's what we're asking tonight. We are? Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Don't hit me, Dwayne. It's not all about the money.
Yeah.
We want you to come.
Yeah.
We want everybody here to come out and be a part of this. If you do it, I promise you, you'll get more joy.
That's the second thing that I was gonna ask, if we, as a board, can find a way, and even our employees, to get on board and go out and support this event as a unit, I think it would be great, and it would be great for the community as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Next, county manager's report. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members and citizens. I come to you today with the county manager's report, and today is gonna encapsulate my first 28 days as the county manager. I took the helm on May 8th. I participated in my first board meeting, May 16th. During that board meeting, I assured this board and the citizens that my vision would be aligned with the greatest asset of this community, you, the citizens. I also discussed the importance of the three P approach, people, purpose, and processes. The work that we do is for the greatest resource in this community, the people. The purpose of the work that we're gonna do as an organization is optimal service delivery to the people. And we're gonna examine the processes that we execute our duties and responsibilities to make sure that they are of exemplary performance. Before I could go out and declare any type of methodology or ideology to the citizens and external stakeholders, I must first take care of home. So one of the first initiatives that I had coming into this role was to meet with the internal stakeholders. As I mentioned during the last meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with department heads, staff members, Board of Commissioners, constitutional officers, elected officials, and not only to share with them my plans and my vision, but to ascertain from them, what do we do good here in Newton County? Where is there's an opportunity for us to grow in Newton County? So that once I heard their concerns and shared my initiatives with them, hopefully they approve of those initiatives. Secondly, there's buy-in. And thirdly, there's commitment. So after you take care of home, it's important that you understand the needs of your extended family as well. So during this 28-day journey, I had an opportunity to meet with external stakeholders. Some of the external stakeholders I've identified here on this slide, the Newton County Chamber of Commerce, Piedmont Newton, Newton County Industrial Development Authority, Leadership Newton, Newton Tomorrow. One would ask why? Well, we need economic development. We need efficient healthcare. We need innovative industrial program. We need to see who our emerging leaders are, and we need to see projected business growth. As you all know, we're a lean organization. We have 700-plus employees, so we rely on consultants. Two consultants that I've had the opportunity to meet with on a few occasions was the Ascension Program Management Team that handles our SPOLOX projects and Mr. Jeff Prime, and also iParametrics, our American Rescue Plan Act facilitators with our ARPA funding. Ms. Kennedy Shannon has been working with me in reference to our ARPA programming, just like Mr. Prime has been working with me in relationship to our SPOLOX projects. We have six active SPOLOX projects, and as you all know, we initiated our June 1st Seniors' Repair Program that I'll talk about in the slides coming forth. When you address the needs of a community, you have to address those needs holistically. And one way that you can address those needs holistically through good programming and organizations. And I had an opportunity to meet with Washington Street Community Center Executive Director, Ms. B. Jackson, and she had an opportunity to share with me her initiatives with her nonprofit and the after-school program. It was a delight to see the STEM program that they have available for our youth in this community, and it was a delight to see the agriculture program that they have for our youth in this community. And when you're dealing with today's youth, you have to address them holistically. So I applaud her and her organization and her board as well. I want to give a special thanks to Commissioner Henderson, as well as Commissioner Cowan, for inviting me to the May 25th Town Hall meeting at Good Hope Baptist Church. I had an opportunity to sit with the citizens and have robust dialogue about the Spring Hill Park project. The citizens was open and candid about their wishes in relationship to the park, and I want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Johnson, who's in the audience today, who is not only just a local icon, but a national treasure when it comes to this community and when it comes to his service in the armed forces. We thank you. ARPA programming. I want to first thank the citizens who came up and expressed their concerns about the Senior Home Repair Funding Program. In addition to you all, I've heard from Ms. Thelma, and I've also heard from Ms. Janelle Wagner about the kinks. So I just want the citizens to understand, there are gonna be some ebbs and flows with this process. This is uncharted water for all of us, but be patient with us. Setbacks every now and then, but failure never. We're gonna right the course with this project, trust me. And I want to thank Ms. Lauren Bertram and Newton County Family Connection for their assistance thus far. And internally, I want to give a special thanks to Brian and the Walker for their efforts as well, kind of serving as practice. We're looking at the process now, and we will change some of the processes and make it more efficient. I promise you all that. In addition to this programming, we have some youth programming on the horizon. We're excited about the Youth Commission programming that we have through ARPA and also some other youth activities. And also, we're gonna have the small business program coming about real soon in the coming days. One would ask, why chronicle your first 28 days at the helm? Well, it was important for me because, for one, I had 47 meetings during this 28-day cycle, and I had those meetings with the community stakeholders because what I wanted to hear from the people was get an understanding of their concerns. Having an understanding of their concerns, then I can really look at our second P, purpose, and make sure that those concerns are addressed through our optimum service delivery. And additionally, afforded me the opportunity to do the LOL approach, I had an opportunity to listen to you all, observe, and learn from you. And in doing that, I can only enhance the processes for our service delivery so that we can provide great customer service to you all. This concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, I yield back my time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Has a date been given of when we're going to...
Has a date been given of when we're going to conclude or even start the Youth Commission program to turn in our actual nominations or actually our appointments?
Okay. Well, as you know, we have about forty applicants. And I will be, in the coming days, reaching out to the commissioners in reference to the logistics of the dates and times of when we're gonna start the program. I'm looking at August through May. Uh, this program is gonna really be intense, but yet provocative for the youth because there's gonna be some academic rigor associated with it, right? They're not gonna just identify problems and concerns of the youth, but they're also gonna get an understanding of local government, state government, and federal government. Those are gonna be modules, and then they're gonna have a capstone project at the end of it. So not only will they just come and participate, I think it's important for them to understand, hey, at the state senate level, you need to understand that District Seventeen and District Forty-three, what that means to you. At the state representative level, you need to understand what the Ninety-third District, the Hundred and Thirteenth District, and the Hundred and Fourteenth District means to you. So in the coming days, I'll send a communication out to the Board of Commissioners telling the logistics of our plan going forward.
Yeah, thank, yeah, that's what the Youth Commission actually does. So thank you so much for outlining that. I was just concerned because a lot of the parents are concerned about what's going on. So we definitely, we can get something out really soon, because school starts back, I believe, the end of, I don't have a child in the school system anymore, but I think the end of July, August, August first. And then I think I sent some, um, trips with the Presidential Museum that they were, they can go to as well in July. So I, that can be something they can assist with.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Commissioner.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I too have had, um, some parents call me, uh, people who had put in for, uh, kids who had put in for those positions. And so, um, I guess I'm trying to, uh, when will we get the list of the applicants in the districts? So that the district can choose from those kids who have, uh, put in for that particular, I guess I wanna say, position.
That list will go out before the end of this week, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I think we have two appointments. Uh, Ms. Bobby Shepherd, District Four, are you here tonight? And Ms. Carol Moss, District Five, are you here tonight? Thank you. Uh, those appointments will be going to the Library Board. And we always, as always, we thank you for your service. Thank you for being willing to serve. Uh, we greatly appreciate you, uh, caring enough to do this for your county. Um, with that being said, I seek a motion that we approve, um, the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner, um, Mason, and the second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Next is, um, item. Well, I'm gonna use chairman's privilege tonight to bring up Ms. Ms. Applewhite. Ms. Applewhite is on vacation, and she actually came in. Um, so we wanna get her, get her in and out if we can. If you would, please come on up. Ms. Applewhite is number eighteen, eighteen. Thank you for coming in tonight. Greatly appreciate you, ma'am.
Okay, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and Board. Uh, this is gonna be brief. Um, on, in May, we looked at the fiscal year twenty-two CIE Short Term Work Program, and the board approved this transmittal to DCA. They have since approved it as of May thirty-first, and I've brought it back before the board for it to be adopted. And it is basically the same, of course, this allows us to maintain our qualified local government status. It's one of the items it does. The other one would be the comprehensive plan. And that should be coming to you at the next meeting for adoption. And it is the same, um, information that was provided last time. And you all have this packet in your folders. It just, these are just the projects, what have been completed and what we have for the next five years. And of course, at the end, it's the fiscal budget for twenty-twenty-two. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner?
This is just a vote to adopt it.
Any questions? I seek a motion, please.
Can I make a motion to approve the Short Term Work Program?
Can I get a second, please?
It's actually a resolution, I'm so sorry about that. It's Resolution R. Twenty-twenty-three zero-six zero-six.
It's a motion that we approve, um, Resolution R. Two zero-two-three zero-six zero-six. The motion and second, is there any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Enjoy your vacation. Thank you so much. Next is item number, we're gonna go back, revert back to item number seventeen. Sheriff offered discussion, um, language change for vehicle purchasing ARPA funds.
Chairman Baines, and those who make up this board here tonight, it's great to be here with you tonight. And I can't say, uh, Mr. Cooper, pleasure for you coming over and meeting with us. And I certainly hope, uh, you stand firm on those three Ps. Looking forward to working with you. On tonight, I think it's gonna be a typo, uh, on tonight, I, you're, and, and I'll, I'll accept that responsibility. Where it says ARPA funds, it should be SPOSS funds. And I'll accept that responsibility because I think when I called in to my assistants, that's what I stated, uh, when I called in, but, uh, it shouldn't be SPOSS funds. The reason being that we want to go ahead and change the language. I know it says, uh, cars. I believe that was the language in the, in the original. That said cars. However, we want to move in a direction, um, not to, uh, handcuff ourselves to just cars. We want to be able to order motorcycles, uh, which there is a need. And we just wanna change it to vehicles instead of, uh, cars. And that, and that's the terminology that we would like to change it to.
Patrick.
So Sheriff, is this on the current SPOSS? Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct.
So one of the... So one of the, the issues with the SPOSS law is we are, we are, I don't wanna say stuck with, but we are bound by the language in the SPOSS resolution. Doesn't mean we can't achieve your goal, but what I would like to do is, is have an opportunity to look into it a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cars, um...
It's just broad, and I just think that we need to define it.
It's gonna depend on how broadly we can define what was listed in the, in the actual SPOSS ballot. But what I'd like to do is have a look at it. I'll issue a memo to the board. I'll happily share it, share it with Sheriff Brown.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, uh, we'll certainly address it. I don't think there's any real action the board needs to take.
Mm-hmm.
If the SPOSS ballot encompasses vehicles in a bigger picture, then you would be free to proceed. If they, if the SPOSS ballot doesn't, it's too late to change. So we'll just have to work through that, and maybe there's some other budgeting tool that can be utilized. But let me, let me dive into that, look at it, and get a response out this week.
Okay, great, fantastic.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. And this is, um, to the county attorney, Patrick. How long will it take for us, for you to send us that memo?
I'll have it this week.
Okay.
And thank you. Also, I think moving forward that, and I think that burden should not just rest on, uh, the constitutional officer or even the chairman or whomever. I think that, that burden should be, uh, encompassed with everybody, uh, at some point, to have that language that we need. Uh, you know, the tre- chairman need to buy, um, a truck. And it is not in the SPOSS funds, uh, in the SPOSS language, excuse me. I think that's something that we need to look at very closely when we do the next SPOSS.
You wanna, you got two items, I think.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
The next item here is, um, and I guess we're seeking directions. I talked with the county manager, and we looked at our purchase, purchasing policy. And I guess what we need to, to decide on the ARPA funds, are we bound to the county purchasing policy? Or is there a rules and rigs by the ARPA, by federal guidelines that we have to abide by? I think that's one of the things there that need to be made clear. We had a situation at the, at the jail where our HVAC system went out. Just thankful that it was during the time when the weather was favorable in a sense. We had almost five hundred inmates, and we have more than a hundred staff members throughout the day, throughout the facility. It took more than a week to get a PO through in order to facilitate this matter. We was able to get three bids, and, and I can inform all of you, getting bids is not the easiest thing to do when a person know that they're not going to get the job. It's, it's simple. So it's very time-consuming and very troublesome to get those bids back in a timely manner. Our situation, when I say the HVAC system went out, again, we had almost five hundred inmates plus, uh, staff daily. We ended up having to have staff twenty-four hours a day, staff twenty-four hours a day, our, from our maintenance division, to go down. We have, we have more than two hundred valves that control our system there. So they had to control the system by going down hourly, however it was used, to kind of manage the temperature in the building. So I, I said that to say, yes, the weather was favorable to us. We were not in the high nineties nor one hundred. But could you imagine trying to work two hundred valves, trying to maintain the system for, for longer than a week time? Not only the valves, you have, um, heat control systems that you have to also manage. So when we look at the amount of money we spent in a twenty-four hour cycle of keeping staff on to control those valves, also to control the mechanical part of it, it cost us money that I think that was unnecessary had we looked at this in a emergency situation. Now, we are here in this situation because the past county manager did not put any money into the budget for, um, for repairs. And, and that's the reason, and I guess we relying on these funds in order to operate. So I think it's something that we need to iron out to make sure, are we gonna operate? Is there rules and rigs by the feds in terms of how we can spend this money? Are we going to go by the county policy? And which the county policies say one thing in terms of the, uh, emergency needs up front. But however, when it get to the back, it says that it does not apply to the constitutional officer and elected officials. So that's something there we need to look at. Also, if I may approach, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna pass out something to you. If you look at the correspondence, if you look at the correspondence in that, um, in particular, the very last paragraph, it, it's troublesome to me when my staff member is trying to arrive at a solution and you have someone else with their own commentary. It's troublesome to me. What that person should have done was picked up the phone, called my finance person, and said, let's work this out. Instead of sending emails with commentary. We don't need that. And it's, it's disturbing to me that you would have someone sitting back in an office trying to dictate, not only that, but trying to tell the sheriff or whomever how to run his organization. Again, we had more than, almost five hundred inmates there, hundred-plus staff members daily. And to be frank with you, I didn't feel good about it. As a matter of fact, I had a sinus infection as a result of it because you could not control the heat and the air in the building. This is a matter that we need to look at very close and determine whether or not are, is there rigs, rules and rigs from the feds, or are we going to go by the county purchasing policy? And even if, even if it's by the county purchasing policy, at the end of the day, we do not have to select the highest one, nor do we have to select the lowest one. We have to select the person who's able to come in and perform the services that is required. On this situation here, we needed someone that could do the mechanicals and all of it together. And that was the reason why we got away from companies that can only do one particular thing. You have to have a company that's versatile, that can do everything you need. Because what we found out in the, in the past, if we had one company to come in and do the mechanical part, one company to come in and do the HVAC, when there's an issue, both does what? They point fingers at each other. And that's what we're trying to get away from. And the company that we use is the company that we had suggested to use, ended up being the lowest one, but also it took us longer than a week to get this matter resolved. So I just think we need to work on how we're going to move forward. And again, there's no funding available, so we are relying on these funds to operate. So if we're caught in a situation like this again, we just need to be able to move forward.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
I just wanna go back. I believe we voted five, to put five million dollars out of ARPA into capital improvement because it wasn't budgeted in our budget. Didn't we do that the beginning of the year? It was five million, it was, it was ass of eight, and we turned the eight down. And then we came back and did five, because we did have no money budgeted for capital improvements in our budget, and they were depending on the ARPA funds. So that's the five million. And, um, I'm glad we did get this information from the consultant, because Sheriff is right. The Department of Treasury does not require that bidding process because they wanted to make it easier to get the funding out to the community. And that came from the Department of Treasury. That's not Elena Sanders saying that. That was one of the main things. That's why I was concerned about some of the processes we had put in place. Because the funding is supposed to be easily accessible to get to the community and to what's needed. And capital improvements was also one of them. So, um, I just wanna make sure of that, and we don't wanna have any issues like one county just had that's in the news and being sued in regards to their jail system because the board didn't handle the process.
So I, this is some...
So this is something I wasn't aware of before tonight, but I would like to point out a couple of things. Depending on how this money was allocated, and I just don't know because I don't carry all this around by memory, if we are spending the ARPA funds directly as a direct allocation, then we are required to follow federal guidelines. If, however, this is money that we took in, you know, as revenue replacement money and something like that, we're then obligated to proceed under our purchasing ordinance. And I don't know these funds, which way that went, but I'll certainly find out. However, we are not, the ARPA funds don't excuse us from following our own local purchasing guidelines, even if we pull those into local funds. So there are guidelines, but I will say, if we're operating under Newton County policy, we do have an emergency, an emergency procedure that would allow us to spend the money quicker. But I need, I need to speak to Ms. Shannon. I need to start to speak with Brittany White in finance and sort of sort out how this came to be. And I'd like to hear from everybody about how this came about. I wasn't included on any of these communications. I wasn't aware of it. But I'll certainly look into it and we'll address that issue.
Okay, and if you'd do me a huge favor, if you would, if you would get those rules and rigs to our office so that we can read over it and digest it, if you would do that for us. And we were hoping that we was operating under the county emergency policy. As it states here, "An emergency situation resulting from imminent danger to the public health and welfare and safety of property, a loss of essential government services." And it reads on, and I thought that's what we was operating under, but yet still, it took us more than a week to facilitate this matter.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is not the first time we come up with a problem with our purchasing policy. We've talked about this before, different things has come up. I suggest at this point, the sheriff has hired a finance person. We've got a finance person. We got Patrick. I'll be glad to donate some time if I need to. But that, there's some areas in that policy that needs to be addressed because there are situations that come up that hamstring us. And I don't think, I mean, the sheriff's a lot more honorable person than I am because I'm the person that goes right to the edge. Because if the HVAC went out in a jail, I'd go, I'd go down here and get somebody locals because they come over here and fix it, and I send y'all a bill. And y'all might get mad about it, but that's just the way, that's just the way I think. The sheriff's a lot more honorable than that. I think we need to take a look at our purchasing policy because it's not the first time, it's not just you. It's been other department heads. There's been gaps that have come up in that plan that we really need to fill those out. And I'm all for, and I don't even know if the state law allows it, but of course, sometimes I think state law hamstrings people too. But I'm not opposed to, if it's legal, do a bid for, somebody's got the service for three years or whatever. They got a long-term contract, and you call them anytime you need them. You only got one person to call, and you don't have to worry about it. You don't have to worry about bids or anything like that. But I think it's time now, we need to, we need to address it. You've got a good finance person. The county's got a good finance person. We need to take a look at it. It's starting to hamstring us, and we can't, our department heads are not able to get their jobs done.
You bring up a good point. You could very easily identify, well, I say very easily, you could identify potential areas where you need service. And you could have on-call contractors approved where you essentially are issuing purchase orders. Now, there are limits, state law doesn't limit this. I have no idea what the cost of this repair was. But there, because this is replacing an HVAC system, could be such, or repairing one, could be such a big undertaking. You may drift into what is known as the Georgia Public Works bidding requirements.
I remember those.
And those are much more stringent. That's state law that we have to live with. But I do think it might make sense, you know, add to Mr. Cooper's list of things to do, is to work on identifying those areas where you may, from time to time, need service. And go ahead, and you can engage in some competitive bidding or competitive proposals to approve a list of on-call service people who can, who can appear when needed and do the work.
And then he can, he can put money into his capital improvements.
Or repair and maintenance.
Repair, maintenance, whatever. Put it in the budget there for that. And then when something happens, Cell Block C goes out for electrical or whatever, he pick up the phone, call an electrical contractor that's on the bid list or whatever, on the, not necessarily on the bid list, but on the list, person you already vetted and checked. Get them down there to fix it, they send you a bill, and we're done.
Did this require a new system or is it just a repair?
This is, this is going to be a system. Right.
And that, that may operate, the system may work a little differently, but to your point, I do think as an interim measure, it would make, it would make a lot of sense to go ahead and have some on-call contractor.
That's my one, first question. Second question is, where is ABM at on this thing?
Good question.
Okay. If they ain't doing their job, I want you to sue them for us. Well, I guess the board will have to vote. I'm not used to doing that. But I would breach that contract and be done with them people. They ain't nothing but rip us off. Excuse me.
Commissioner Sanders.
I don't mean to get in the middle, but I've been hearing about ABM. What are they supposed to be doing for us?
Maintenance.
And we're paying them monthly?
Yes. Been doing it since day one when I come in.
If, if we think we have a breach, let's put a pin in that discussion for now. Let's schedule executive session at the next meeting, gather some information, and make some decisions.
This is how I feel about it.
Anything else, guys? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
I guess one quick comment, comment in regard to Mr. Cooper. You know, we want you at this point to work with the office of sheriff so that we can resolve this issue that the office of sheriff has with their system and along with Patrick, so that we can kind of get it done.
Thank you. And as, go back to what Commissioner Cowan said earlier. I think now's a good time to look at our purchasing policy because like I said, as you read through the policy itself, it contradicts itself in many ways. So it seems as if one thing is scapegoat, but I think now's the time to look at it.
There definitely will be a comprehensive review of the purchasing policy as well as the federal guidelines associated with ARPA too.
All right, and if you would get those guidelines to us, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Next is item number 19. The Fire Department, purchasing request approval to purchase hoses and nozzles for the new fire station. Chief, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, for being here.
I'll be brief. I come before you this evening with a request of approval to purchase some much-needed fire hose and nozzles. I think the information's been given to y'all, but it's out of ARPA funds. It's a total of $64,864.50.
Thank you, sir, and it is budgeted. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's motion by, I think Commissioner Henderson beat you. Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is item 20. Information Services Requesting Approval of Agreement with JSCM. Mr. Gregg, if you would, please come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Seeking your approval for an agreement for JSCM group for our network security assessment. What this document does basically lays out the guidelines or rules of engagement for their network security testing. It can place limits on what they can and can't do. It basically just spells out the scope of the project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. And this is in the budget. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is landfill purchasing request approval to purchase vehicle scale. Mr. Matt, come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I, when I first started the landfill, we attempted to calibrate the scales. The scales are the original scales for the facility. We were unable to calibrate them due to one of the, one of the major components, the lever underneath them, underneath the scales was broken. We repaired the scales, but the company that repaired them said, you know, advised us that we needed to look at purchasing a new scale since if this part, there's, there's four levers underneath there. If this part was broken, eventually the other three were going to fail, which was a safety concern and also a calibration concern. The scales have to calibrate per the Department of Agriculture. They come by and check the scales, make sure they'll calibrate. If they don't, then they can shut us down. So we sent out a bid for a new scale and, or we're like, you know, we're going to utilize SPOSS funding for this. So it's a, something that's necessary. If scales don't work, landfill can accept waste, so.
Thank you, sir. And I'm not sure if you've been before the board before, but this is the new landfill director, Mr. Matt Dolan. Welcome. Guys, I seek a motion, please.
So move. Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a question. How much funding is left in the 2017 SPOSS? I remember when Brittany came up, she said everything was exasperated. The funding was gone. Was this already budgeted in something?
So each, so the Solid Waste Authority has its own SPOSS, so it's coming out of that portion. Anybody else? Commissioner Henderson.
I just have a question. And maybe, maybe it's not more to you, more to, I guess, the board members who are on the board. Could we have a quarterly report from the Solid Waste Authority? Yeah, because, and I'll tell you the reason why. Because when we had the meeting this spring here, I think Mr. Wise would tell us that regular deals reported for us, I think, our qualities and stuff like that. And I think since we are spending taxpayers' dollars, that it should be something that we all should be abreast of as to what's going on and what testing do we have and etc. Thank you.
I think, I think we can do that. Can you remind me to get it at the next meeting to make sure?
Yes, sir, I'll do so.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, it was nice meeting everyone.
Human Resources Requesting Approval of Community Liaison Employment Positions. That's Shoemaker.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I am here tonight to request the, that the Board of Commissioners create a position that will help with the express needs for our community engagement to fill in the gap between those programmings needed from the Board of Commissioners and the community and vice versa, such as two of the programs that we heard here tonight. One of the programs was, we need someone on the county side to assist with helping senior citizens fill out the applications for the ARPA funding. Another program that we heard about tonight was the need for the county to champion the Miracle Lead All-Star Event. This position will be funded under the Board of Commissioners account and managed by the chairman. Some of the position duties include planning, coordinating, and evaluating county-related programs, events, activities, as well as activities within the community, participating as a representative of the county in the community meetings to solicit ideas, encourage participation in community initiatives, and enhance community partnership, organizing and planning workshops, presentations, and supporting large-scale special events, as well as creating program services based on assessments of the community needs as well as resources. The county is seeking that the community liaison position be funded for the remainder of the FY '23 year at a cost of $6,694.09 and for the, and that includes salary and benefits, as well as for the FY '24 fiscal year at a total of $87,023.15. And again, that includes salary and benefits.
Any question, guys?
Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. Who was doing this before the position was your request?
We don't have anyone that has been specifically assigned to those duties.
Okay, so, because I know we've had events in the county, so somebody had to plan them.
I'll tell you, the chairman.
Okay. I'm, I'm just going to be, I'm just concerned of the need currently right now. I mean, if the board votes for it, that's on the board. But I, what I believe that we need here is someone who is really good with social media and communication in regards to that. And it's kind of sound like it's going into Brian's area. So that's, that's my concern. It seemed kind of similar in a way, and I could be wrong.
Yeah, this, this position will be a separate position. Such as, like I indicated previously, we've had members of the community express a need for someone at the county level to assist our senior citizens with the application of the ARPA grant. So this person will join with programs such as what was earlier expressed in helping citizens understand the process, understand what is required, required in meeting the needs.
But the ARPA funds are once-in-a-lifetime funding, so it may not come back around again.
Yeah, well, we've also had various department heads to indicate that they need, they also need community outreach. One of our department heads indicated that they, is their desire to, for someone at the county level to develop a volunteer program or to recruit for volunteers to help with the debris management program once a storm comes through. So in my instance, in my case, in human resources, I would really like for someone to kind of be a bridge between HR and the school system, because I don't have enough personnel, to look at what positions we can recruit for as it relates to employees that are leaving high school. So this position will be something that I could utilize myself in my department, as well as other department heads have expressed a need.
I have a lot of questions, I'm sorry, Amanda. But it also sounds like a part of what economic development programs they have they're doing, identifying that as well with the trade, working with Georgia Piedmont and so forth. So I'm asking questions, I want to make sure that my vote is legitimate in regards to the need of paying $87,000.
Well, the expressed concern has been that we need someone within the county to help with those programs. Like I said, even in my department, I would love to have, for the betterment of the county, someone that could assist me in my recruitment efforts in terms of really forming the partnerships with the school systems so that we can understand, you know, the various programmings that's offered so that we can begin to recruit students directly from the school system for some of our positions. of our positions, because I don't have that.
So, is the manpower of, because what you're saying is a lot. The manpower of one person doing this, I see in my mind, having two people at half that price, and they could be part-time. You have one, two people, because event planning, which is my former job, it takes a whole bunch of people to assist with that. You have an event planner, but you got to have a staff. So, who's going to help the person do all the other work?
So, this person will partner with various stakeholders, such as they will partner with myself, other department heads, as well as the Board of Commissioners when you need that community engagement person, and just other people around the county. I don't want to, if you're looking at the salary, I just want to explain to you, because I've had a lot of questions in terms of, especially looking at the FY '24 salary, the $84,000 rate, that's with salaries and benefits. So, the salary for this position is scheduled at $63,450. But the benefit takes up the remainder of, of that to get to that $87,000 rate.
Now, I was looking at what the thing that you had outlined, what they're going to be doing. I just felt that one person can't do all that.
Cannot do that.
So, by having two people that are part-time, it make, making assists with that, because then you have one person, you're doing these duties that, because there's a whole lot of lists that you actually included in there. So, this sounds like a whole department to me. That's just, that's what I'm hearing. But I'll let the other, my colleagues, if they have any questions.
Commissioner Edwards. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so would the, Mr. Cooper outlined a few minutes ago, the, the, the robust junior commissioner program that he's putting together. In, in, in my opinion, that's going to be almost a full-time job to oversee that, probably oversee that program. Do you foresee this position having a lot of input or maybe overseeing that position?
Absolutely. So, this position, so it's various programming that comes up throughout the year. I only indicated the two that were articulated tonight from the community, because it is, you know, a, a position that bridges the gap that is needed between the county and the community. But yes, you're absolutely right. This particular position will assist with that initiative as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that, the key word is assist with that.
I'm glad you said that, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan had a hand up there, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Amanda. I think it's something we need for the county. I appreciate you putting together a job description and everything, and the benefits and salary and everything. And I trust your judgment on this, and I think it'll be a good thing. I think when I was HR Director, it was very frustrating to come before the board, the city council, and you can see where things are going, and people just didn't want to do nothing. They, they were very static. But HR is a transition and very fluid operation. I mean, the people you have here today, you may change, they may be totally different next year. The jobs that you have today may be totally different. And you may have, as Commissioner Sanders said, you may have to add to this down the road. And in my mind, I'm thinking of a lot of things that this person would be critically involved in, and I, I really see the need. So, thank you for putting it together.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been doing it for a while, and you kind of read between lines. We know where it's going. I, it was just my concern. I think we're looking at as far as, and, and if I'm wrong, I'll come back and say, we're not going to do another rollback. I said, this not going to work. Our taxes is going down, but yet we're budgeting more jobs, and people are catching hell just paying them taxes, and especially the school board. And we creating jobs instead of, instead of just cooling down just a little bit and take the reason for the season, and that's our stakeholders, ones who pays taxes. And it's, it's fine with me, you know, if they want, we want to vote in, give them more money, create more jobs, and you're looking at a rollback. And then when your tax bill come out, what happened? Shoot your taxes, they're higher than what three years ago, higher than what was last year ago. So, and, and maybe that's fine. I think we need to just cut stuff here right now, start cutting, and then wait until there, if there's a rollback, which I think is coming, and every three years, for the past three or four years, there been a rollback. And I tell you myself personally, taxes higher than it was the year before that one. And plus that, by me living in the city of Covetown, we paying two taxes, we paying county taxes and we paying the city taxes. But, you know, I, I understand when, when the money's not coming out of your pocket, it's easy to come up and say, I'm going to do this, I'm, I want this, or we vote for this. It's easy to say that until it start coming out of your pockets. And I think taxpayers in Newton County is kind of tired of a whole lot of money coming out of their pockets. And we need to just freeze whatever we doing, in my opinion. So, I'm a little bit down there. So, I just want to be clear. Freeze whatever we doing for a job and stuff until after we make the decision whether or not we're going to do a, another rollback, I mean, the board make a decision, we're not going to do another rollback, because I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
I agree with Commissioner Henderson, but the, the department that we truly need so we're in compliance is a procurement department. We don't have a procurement department. We're out of compliance. Finance is doing everything, which means the finance is doing the bid, accepting the person, and paying the person. We don't have procurement in Newton County. So, if you'd have came before me and said, we're about to do a procurement department, my hand would be raised completely up because, so we can be in compliance and making sure we doing these bids correctly, because you have officials going to jail for bids. So, we have to make sure we have a procurement department in Newton County before we even start hiring anything, because if you look at the processes of our county, we are not operating correctly in some of the departments. So, we have to make sure those are taken care of. I believe we should have events, engagements. I love engaging with the community. But we got to look at our operations first before we start adding on. But the board agree with it. I have to go with the board, but my vote's going to be, I'm going to be honest with you, against until we get that procurement department in place.
Commissioner Cowan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a motion just to move forward and approve the community liaison position to be added, I guess, into the current budget for consideration. That's my motion, just to follow up on that. We still got to approve the budget at some point, and there may be positions in there that are kept and positions that are eliminated, but I'd like to just go ahead and put it in there, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed three, two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, extension office.
I'll, I'll present that, and I'll just do it from here if the board will indulge me.
Yes, sir.
Resolution 2023-06-06 is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Newton County and the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Program. Newton County has supported the Cooperative Extension Program for a number of years. This memorandum of understanding is the routine MOU between the county and the University of Georgia to formalize that support. Last year, last year's budget for the support was about $113,000. In your current proposed budget, is it about, it is about $115,000. And what you're essentially paying for and what the MOU calls for is you're providing office space and the related things with office space, and you're funding the 4-H agent, as I believe the position that you fund. And this agreement will go into effect upon approval, and it will remain in effect unless either party terminates it.
Thank you, sir. Seek a motion, please.
So moved, stated by Academy Attorney.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Next is item twenty-four, citizen comments. This opportunity, we allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Stella Manali from District Four. I just want to know if y'all would vote tonight, instead of giving the senior citizens $15,000, if y'all could give them at least $30,000? And right now, a lot of them are having a hard time getting two estimates, because they can't afford to pay for it out of their pockets. And it's like they're telling people that, you know, you said one thing, but then when you get that, it's a different story. Like you said, Kennedy said that your only thing that you needed was proof of income and your ID. And then y'all partnership with somebody to pay people $20 an hour. But then when they went on June the first, it was like they were going to a class. They was told to pull out their cell phone. Lady told me if I didn't have email address, I didn't even qualify. Now, just think, how many senior citizens don't have cell phone, don't have emails? And one lady was sitting up in there eighty years ago, and it was asking a question of somebody else, what is an email? And, you know, if you got to pay for an estimate out your pocket, you already do. If you got to, you know, pay for stuff, and then if you only getting $15,000, and once you take a roof off of a house if you need one, and they have to replace wood and stuff, if that $15,000 don't cover, those people going to have to come out their pocket with some money. And I just don't think it's right the way we are being treated in this county. And I was told two days that I didn't qualify, so I ain't been back no more. So, if those people that was there the first day, if they was volunteers, then who's getting the $20 an hour? If they done partnership with somebody, where's the money going to? Who's getting paid the $20 an hour? Because people shouldn't have to be told to pull out your cell phone, and we going to tell you how to do stuff. And if they make an error, you know, that's just like y'all said, they done committed fraud. So, they ain't going to get no money. They might be trying to figure out how they going to burn out of jail. So, I'm just being real with you. The people that came up here, they asked for the rest of the money that y'all had in the phone. Then they wanted $2.5 million. Stan put a motion on the floor for $2.1 million, and none of the senior citizens had got anything. But when you go to P. Mod, you still going to pay money to go over there, even though they want $2.5, and we can't even get $30. It wouldn't hurt to give $40. So, I'm just saying, if we going to look after everybody, look after the senior citizens sometime, too. So, if y'all don't mind, you can put the motion on the floor for, for $300 or $40, you can second it, and y'all still here to say, y'all can vote yes and get these folks the money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to report that in May, oh, come on down, Mr. Fred.
Frederick Johnson, 1036 Highway 162, Covet. I know we got six months left before cemetery time. I just want to bring up a couple, a couple of items. Ms. Jackie, she brought to my attention on yesterday, there was a cemetery down in New One someplace, and she going to call me tomorrow and tell me all, all about it. I'll get a chance to go down, take a look at it, and see what can be done with it. But what I, what I, what I stand for, we normally do cemeteries King's Birthday, if I can get enough volunteers. We work pretty hard out there trying to cut the bushes down and so forth and so on, pile the brush up, try to get it burnt up or get them picked, picked up by the county. But what I do need, I need some funds, I guess, be set aside to, after we do the additional cutting, probably March or April one, the stuff already growing back up. If we could get some, some weed killer or something like that from the county, maybe even hire somebody to do it, or if we could get the county workers to do it, at least, you know, it would look okay during the summer. But if, if nothing is done, I mean, hey, it's going to be just like it was when we first got there. So, you know, we got funds for everything else, so even we have funds for fireworks, and hey, when the fireworks are gone, somebody got to clean it up. So, let's think about that, you know? Let's, let's try to respect the dead. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to report, we had a great time last, in May, for, this is our third annual movie in the park series at Denny Dobbs Park. We had a great time for Cinco de Mayo, May 5th, with our movie in the park. So, we are looking forward to our next movie in the park, which is going to be our Juneteenth movie in the park on June the 19th, and we're going to be watching The Princess and the Frog. And so, we want to invite everybody to come out on June the 19th to enjoy an amazing movie with us for our Juneteenth movie in the park. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to take a moment to, to just remember today's date. It's June 6th. And if any of y'all are students of history, you know, June 6, 1944 was the day that the United States and its allies stormed or went into France to liberate it. My dad was a World War II veteran. He was not in the Army, he was in the Navy, and he was in the Okinawa Campaign. But take a moment to remember what happened seventy-nine years ago. It's just, it's just really has formed, it shaped the whole world, particularly Europe. Just take a moment to think about that. And also, Harold, do you want us to give you the names of the people for the youth commission?
I actually have them already through the consultant, but if you have additional names, please.
I have, I have one name I'd like to participate, get in there.
Sure. If you want to send it to me or give it, that's fine.
So, guys, I think it's, we'll discuss that offline, but I think it's too late. They already had to submit it through the county website, and that time period has closed. Now, Kennedy may be able to op, open, offer something else, I'm not sure.
Well, everything else for that OPERA has been slow, so I don't see why they had to speed that up.
I don't think she sent. Yeah, I hadn't got the list yet.
She said she sent to each commissioner. I got, I think, I have fifteen, but she sent to me that.
Well, let's let Harold look in, Harold, let's let Harold look into that.
What's that?
We'll let Harold look into it for you.
Okay. I'll, I'll give you a name at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. At first, I want to definitely thank our, well, my district three volunteers and appointments. I really appreciate all that you do. And as the chairman stated earlier, we acknowledged them on yesterday, so I really appreciate your time and also engaging the community and informing us what's happening on these boards. I really appreciate that. The other thing that was given to me, if we can, Mr. Cooper, is possibly create a form for the residents to include their address when they coming up here, because a lot of them are concerned about saying their address in public. So, if they come up, they could present the form maybe to Ms. Jackie or present it to whomever, so they don't have to say their address in public during this day and age. They don't want that information included in public. So, that's something that I was thinking that we can definitely do. I'm excited that I was selected. I just came back from Disney World Orlando, Florida. I was ch-
I was chosen to present at the FPP Literacy Conference with banks and financial literacy and all those officials that are in literacy. And so as the elected official, I was speaking on partnership with the government, and also spoke about the ARPA funds. So that was an amazing time for them even asking me to be one of their presenters in Orlando, Florida. The other thing that I want to speak on is homelessness in our county. Before I came to this meeting, I had the opportunity to speak to a young lady that was sitting in front of the family, the Dollar General, on two seventy-eight, who was homeless, and she was in and out of the homeless shelter. Just to let you guys know, the face of homelessness has changed. The person that you think is homeless is not that person anymore. We have teachers who are homeless, we have essential workers who are homeless. We have to do something in this county. We have to also work on our investors buying property to certain amount of people, which is causing the homelessness and increase in the housing value, where you have subdivisions who don't even have a quorum, because majority of the subdivisions are owned now by investors, so they can't even have productive meetings, or do any change in their community, and investor doesn't even live in Newton County. They may live in Mexico or somewhere in another country. So that's unfair to those residents, and it's affecting our home state here with our essential workers, our workable population, to where they cannot even afford to survive, our seniors, they cannot afford to survive. So here in the county, we have to do something. We are policymakers, we're legislators, we can't just sit up here and not help the people. And that's a huge, I keep saying this every week, that is a huge concern for me that we just have a blind eye to what's happening in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. You know, we all know that Juneteenth is just around the corner, and it's a reminder of where people of color, just, you know, just where we are today. We still struggling with, I think, over the TK Adams business, just getting a, just getting a contract for her to, Ms. Terry James, to just stay in the building. We still struggling with that, and that shouldn't be. I can remember as an adolescent, and this is where I'm from, this is home for me. And we lived down in Centia. And sometimes the skinheads of KKK would come up to the square, and my mother, as a child, would grab me by the hand and drag me all the way home. And people say, well, you know, times have changed, and times have changed. But I think, we have got to do, I think I remember a picture right in there, sitting down here on the first floor, and it said unity. We have got to really not just see it or look at a picture, but really just let us do it, and we can do it. And so let us help our seniors, let us help the people who are in need, let us help the homeless. We can do it if we just work together. And I'm just gonna say this in closing, we are strong when all the cities work together, along with the county, and we can make our community stronger and do a lot of great things for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. First, I want to publicly congratulate Newton County School Superintendent Samantha Fury on her retirement this month, this, our school system, and thus our kids are much better off for her being our superintendent for the last, I guess it's close to, maybe a decade.
Ten years, yeah.
So I just want to wish her the best and thank her publicly for her service. The second thing, I think you, most of the commissioners, you probably saw my email today or yesterday having to do with neighborhood pool parties. I saw this arise last year, and we have neighborhood pool parties, they're charging admission, they're clogging up the streets, they're, you know, doing things they shouldn't do on other people's property. And what I'm afraid of is there's gonna be some property owner confrontations, and it won't turn out very well, probably. So I know you're all, you all see this in your neighborhoods every year. I've had one last year, and I've already had one this year, and I've reached out to the Sheriff's Department to have a discussion with the chief deputy over there in this particular scenario. He's gonna help me out with extra patrols, I think. So, but it's something that we need to, probably, Mr. Cooper, you probably need to have some dialogue with the sheriff on what the sheriff suggests that we can do for, not just pool parties, summer pool parties. You know, the clogging up of the neighborhoods and our subdivisions with functions like that, if the HOAs don't have something in place already. But I just don't want this to turn into something huge, and it started already. So I just want to make everyone aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I want to take an opportunity to congratulate Commissioner Mason on his new appointment. I saw it, the email came through from ACCG, I think it's the vice chair of the Revenue and Finance Committee. Congratulations, sir. I also want to take an opportunity to thank the commissioners, all who came, all you guys who came out. I know Commissioner Henderson, you came to make it last night, but we greatly appreciate you and for coming last night and letting the volunteers know that you appreciate the work and the time and their talents that they offer to service this community. So thank you so much, and we're so appreciative of the crew that actually put that together. Ms. Money Lucky, and I think Ms. Hamp worked with her, and they did a, Ms. Henderson, no, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Goodman, Ms. Nolly, Susan Nolly, they did an excellent job of putting that together, so we are so thankful to them as well. I have nothing else, so I seek a motion that will adjourn. Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Okay, it's a motion by Commissioner Mason, and second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor. We stand adjourned, thank you.